Six o'clock, we call the meeting to order. City of Anamosa, city council, agenda regular session, Monday, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, six P M. Anamosa Library and Learning Center via Zoom. One point zero roll call.
Crum?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Macart?
Here.
Zomba?
Here.
Stout?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
All council members acknowledged, present. Two point zero pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rebecca, we do have individuals who've joined the meeting virtually. Could you please give the update of how to contact you when it's time for public input?
Sure, so those of you joining on Zoom will notice that you can't unmute yourselves. So go ahead and just either raise your hand when you'd like to speak on an agenda item. If you're on a laptop or desktop, you can find the raise your hand option under the reactions tab. Otherwise, you can always just send me a chat in the chat box. And a quick note to city council with the microphones. The, there's some static that comes in when the other microphones get turned on, which is why Jeff has his regular microphone back. So when somebody wants to speak, a member of the public, if one of you could just hand over your microphone so we don't get that weird static, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Rebecca. Three point zero approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Allen, second by Jeff, need discussion on the agenda. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Agenda is approved. Four point zero, motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings. Four point one, May ten, twenty twenty one, regular city council meeting.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by John, any discussion on the minutes that they, as they have been submitted? About that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Five point zero, public hearings. Five point one, public hearing on the proposed sale of real estate, real, real property located at one hundred East First Street in Anamosa, Iowa, to Kajor Partners. I will open the public meeting.
Have you received any comments or?
I, I have not. There have been no written or verbal comments.
Entertaining motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Allen to close the public hearing. Any further council discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion to close public hearing carried unanimous. Five point two, resolution approving the sale and conveyance of one hundred East First Street to Kajor Partners.
So moved.
Motion by Rich, second by Jeff. See Craig, who I believe to be Craig, has joined us virtually. Craig, do you have any comments to make on this? Rebecca, have you unmuted Craig?
Yes, he is unmuted. I don't know if he knows that. Yeah, I don't know that he's, but Kajor Partners, you've been unmuted if you'd like to say anything.
I think that is all's good. We have a motion, again by Rich, second by Jeff, if there's no other council discussion, I'll ask Beth to conduct the roll vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Macart?
Yes.
Capron?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Motion approved unanimously. Six point zero, proclamations, none. Seven point zero, old business. Seven point one, monthly engineering report from H R Green with S R F funding update.
So the S R F funding update is just something that was sent to me. It just states that we're at that, the front end, the documents are done, and it looks like everything is moving along fine. I don't know if Andrew was going to be able to join us tonight. I did talk to him earlier, if he had any questions, otherwise it's pretty straightforward, kind of where we're at with everything.
Does council have any questions for Beth regarding concerns or questions about the update? With none being mentioned, seven point two, monthly engineering report from Snyder and Associates. Don't see anybody from Snyder's who's joined us virtually.
The nature is pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, the only question I really have is, it seems like for the old Dubuque Road, they talk an awful lot about the bridge and the embankments and, and so forth, which that's kind of down the road. I don't know if they need that so much for the phase one project or what portion of that really comes into play on this. But, you know, I thought we were focusing on at least phase one and embankment on one side.
Part of phase one was some excavation work.
Right.
For that.
For the embankment on, on the west side of the road, but.
Mainly it was just to save the dirt, to start.
And start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or at least not having it called away to a different location than having to call it back again. We can move it around in place, but.
But I, I'm hoping that, that in and of itself is not holding up our project at phase one in any fashion.
Looking at the schedule, I, I wouldn't say it is rich, but I'm in agreement with, I wouldn't like to have the breaks applied for this phase one project, you need to get that extension connected.
Right.
So it was there on, on progress, very construction, because they're letting December twenty one in phase one, so spring, summer of twenty two, construction start.
Correct.
About a year.
Completed two years from now.
Good, you, you'd mentioned you were in contact with H R Green, did you build contact with Spire recently?
Just with Tim, which Tim is the one who sent over the memo and just, just email wise. And he just checked to make sure that I, I got the memo and if I had any questions on it. Which I'm hoping there, that the preliminary is going to be able to be to us, you know, June next week already, so.
Have they been keeping in fairly regular contact with you?
No, we used to have Friday meetings, but we haven't had one for quite a while.
Do they normally set them up or do you set them up or do you have a usual thing when you have them?
Usually they would set it up. Usually they'd just send me a meeting invitation, that way they could schedule it into their calendar. Otherwise, generally, I'll just email Lindsay and say, hey, we'll be out because.
So from administrative standpoint, do you think that, do you have concerns with not having regular contact or?
It'd be nice if we were still having a regular, just because there's, you know, three projects.
Maybe reach, reach out and say, can we get back on the regular schedule of whatever you put your meeting and just, doesn't have to be long, but just up to date.
Yeah.
Since, yeah, like, so there's multiple projects.
I, I just don't want things to start slipping through the cracks. If we can maintain a regular schedule, even if it's five minutes or ten minutes, it doesn't have to be.
Crops up, we know about it.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a real extensive, but
No.
just touch base and see where we're at, see what the next steps are.
Do you know what they're thinking, it says public information, June July twenty one, what is on the plans for that? I mean, that'd be a good thing to talk about.
Yeah.
What that would look like.
That I don't know, the first I've seen in the schedule was right here.
Yeah. We need to be better informed from them.
Nothing else? Seven point three, resolution amending the city of Anamosa's personnel policy. Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Was there much revision done to it, assuming that some of these highlighted in yellow?
Um, just really the wage section, because frankly, the wages are set annually by resolution regardless of what's in here. And the secondary employment was the other. Otherwise, some of it was just eliminating some repetitive things.
Well, and I think.
Condensing it a little bit.
Yeah, I think you took out the safety.
Yeah.
Section.
Too much of that, yeah.
Yeah.
I kind of kept the, a little bit of it and then kind of the return to work process, because that's kind of important for our working comp.
I did wonder about the, how the new accounting system is going to impact the signing in of employees. And I can't remember, is it seven point oh one? I'm not finding. Cause.
Oh, time sheets?
Yeah.
Um, so everything will just be electronic instead of paper. So everything else will stay the same, it'll just really be, they'll just sign in on the computer. It still has to go through the approval process, the same as a paper time card, where it'll go to their su- immediate supervisor for approval.
And they still have to sign a hard copy?
There isn't a hard copy.
Okay.
It's an electronic approval, so it, they have to put their initials electronically on it that they've, that they've approved it. Or let's say for some reason the supervisor has to change something on the time card, it's also initial.
Okay.
So there's a, a trail.
All right, thank you.
Um, we haven't figured out how to keep track of time for salaried employees. We can't do it through the accounting system because it will override the eighty hours. So we're still working on that. The auditor said we needed to do some timekeeping, so we're still working on that part.
The changes. So the previous version, would it have strike through or is it just a complete update?
Oh, this is nothing even close to what we previously thought. I mean, some, some essence of it is the same, but, I mean, like the vacation tables the same, the sick times the same. But for the most part, it's a new document.
So this is for approval of the document including the changes?
Correct.
Yeah.
The document as you're saying.
Yes.
Yeah. Unless you haven't had it.
Yeah. If you have something. The only thing, um, I mean, since we're here having a conversation, I thought of. But I just thought, we're talking about, it says use of vehicle, of city vehicles. And I know it's different with the police department, and I understand when it's pulled up, but it would be worth putting something in there like a timeframe as far as, I guess I thought of, not sure if it happens, but letting vehicles run, I mean, it's one thing if it's during time, but in the, I know police cars have their reasons for like their computers and stuff, but you know, if it's not really cold and it's not summer, I mean, not to let vehicles just sit and run, I know sometimes that and maybe I think, if he just, just to talk across my mind, because it's public dollars.
Wouldn't that also be a violation of state law?
Unoccupied vehicle, it shouldn't be, no.
It's not, okay. Or everybody else, I just, I just thought of this, if we're looking through the document.
I don't know, when I worked there, never really was much of a problem. The only time, well, like you said, in the winter, when it was real cold and it was plow, snow, we would leave the trucks running for break, you know, fifteen minutes, because they would get there to keep running and cooling down harder, starting, but I really never noticed, you know, I understand what you're saying. But it just never seemed to be any big problem then anyway.
I don't see it when I'm on the street.
I, I, there's other things you'll mention that, for the most part, aren't a problem, but it would be documented at the beginning of the problem.
Yeah.
Since essentially.
Well, that may be something we need to come up with, some procedures and, you know, not necessarily the policy, but a procedure scenario.
I'll ask if there's any city employees that would have comment on the revised policy. There's no further council discussion, I'll ask Beth to conduct the roll vote.
Macart?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yeah.
Capron?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
No.
Yeah.
Motion to approve carried unanimously. Resolution amending downtown task force, seven point four.
So there was some discussion at hometown Friday as to whether or not the task force was still working, and currently it's not. But the revisions requested would be to the membership. And then talking with Derek, it would just be to maybe have some other, a more varied panel than just property owners. Really, they're kind of down there all the time, sometimes it's nice to get a perspective of someone that comes downtown to shop. Or maybe someone who just lives here.
Seven of the four others, that section?
Yeah.
How many are on it?
Seven. There's four, four appointed and then three that are chosen by the four.
Are we going to state that the other three need to reside within city limits or within the school district? What, what kind of parameters are you thinking on that part?
Um, I was just thinking it within the county, you know, somebody who would come here to go shopping, so or the school district would be fine.
I, I would like this at least limited to the school district, I think.
Nope, that would be good.
So with that being said, I'll move to approve with that addition.
And just to clarify, the, I mean, there's four appointed on here, or, that are Derek and Jayden, but then the four others, those are to be appointed by the, the, the main four appointed people in the committee, but with these stipulations of, of the criteria, for some.
Right. And really just as long as they're within the school district and will, and just try and get a better variety. I mean, unless you want to change anything else in there. As far as the four, if you want to keep the four, I mean, really, it's wide open. The meetings will be public meetings and they will be held in the city council chambers when we do have them, and the public will be invited to participate in these meetings.
Last room there.
Jeff, in general, could you speak a little louder into your mic?
I was just saying that I think, I believe at this time, there's only one other property owner or what have you at this time, so there'd be some, some people to appoint basically.
Do you know who the one owner is still?
Sharon Minger.
Sharon Minger.
Should the council restate who their, uh, council appointed representative is?
Well, right now it's Jeff.
Yeah.
But I, I was just thinking that we're somewhat dissolving or restarting the employer and rename that council representative.
Well.
You don't have to, we're just, we're just actually changing the.
We're just approving.
Unamended to the rest of it.
Yeah, at this point in time, and there's a motion that's been made, waiting for a second.
I'll second it.
Was there not previous, were there not previously a resolution for this?
No, there, there was, but it was really specific in that the other three people had to be business owners or they had to be related to the downtown.
So how many business owners do you want to have be?
Well, that depends, I mean, technically, the chamber director should be representing those businesses. So I don't know if you need business owners besides the chamber director, or if you prefer to have a business owner in lieu, I mean, it's kind of a double.
Well, and it's.
It gets you more of a variety of ideas than being so focused on just the people who own things or run things downtown.
The only thing I think of is, you have the chamber director representing the business community, but may not have, may or may not have the insight of you know, owning a building or what, kind of behind the scenes of, you know, what these buildings, you know.
Right.
Have that aspect.
I don't think chamber director should be in contact with the business owners on a fairly fair, fairly often bit, time, timeline.
Well, and this gives the task force the option of bringing in a business owner plus other people, so it's not saying a business owner can't be on.
Just saying that it shouldn't, it's not, it's not being limited to just.
It's not limited to business.
But it doesn't have to be just.
Correct.
Yeah.
The, the mayor's been on there before, I mean, it doesn't mention that you can sit on there, sit in on meetings, I assume that's going to be the same.
As a member of the public?
Yeah.
Anybody.
Any further discussion? Any public comment from those that are in chambers? Any public comment from individuals who've joined us virtually? Motion by Rich, second by Kay. To approve the downtown task force with the amendment of individuals must reside within the school district. Go through the discussion, Beth, please conduct the roll vote.
Capron?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Macart?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Motion approved carried unanimously. Eight point zero, new business. Request for eight point one, request for closure of the city parking lot west of Wapsy Therapy for the replacement of the God Bless America statue on June ninth through the tenth, twenty twenty one. Leanna's with us virtually, Leanna, do you have any comments to make?
Um, I'm not sure if. We'll need the ninth for sure, um, the ninth is when it comes in, but the tenth for sure will be the big day when everything gets set up.
I guess I would add, um, is there any way we could do just a portion of that lot or you, I mean, the, the big lot behind Remley Williams is already closed and they're not using the whole thing? I just know a couple of businesses down there are already short on parking, if we could maybe use part of Remley Williams, behind Remley Williams and just part of Wapsy. Um, for that, for the ninth and ten.
Well.
I'm just, I'm just thinking if we close down both, there's not a lick of parking, um, of either of those lots and for those two days.
So Sally is aware, um, of the dates and we kind of like to do an event down there. And last time we did it, we did use the, the back of Remley Williams, and now that won't be available. So with the equipment that's coming in, and if we want to try to do something in there, we would need the whole parking lot.
I mean, all, all, I see it every day, all that's in there is a, a telehandler, a port body, and maybe a dumpster, a truck, and the rest of it's, I'd say they don't even have this full on the regular. I'm just.
I'll ask the contractor.
Yeah, if they could like just for those couple of days, maybe use, I'm, I'm not opposed to, I'm just, you know, but the two businesses right there I know are all displaced and parking, so.
Long discussion. Your motion. I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Galen, second by Jeff. For the council discussion. Public comment. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimous. Eight point two, discussion of possible action on the request by Roger and Roxanne Dunyan to purchase section of alley adjacent to one thousand East Second Street.
So is this agreeing to the purchase or this is just at this point vague, agreeing to vacate or start the process?
Start the process.
Okay.
So yeah, we'll still have to send the letters to the, well, there's just one other adjacent property owner. And, um, well, two, the other one is interested in buying the second one that's next, but there's one other property owner that owns.
The other half.
The other half.
Yeah. Okay, so to start the process, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by John. This would sense would be the back half to what we sold off two years ago.
Yep, that the neighbors were supposed to be contacted at that time about this whole alley.
It, it only makes, it only makes sense, I mean, it's not, there's, there are some alleys that are still used for driving that people want to buy, but this is, there's no.
There's a structure sitting right in the middle of this alley anyways.
Well, and plus the fact that the other end of the alley has already been vacated, so it's not, even if there is an alley there, it's not a true alley.
And there's no, no pavement or anything, you know.
No.
So again, we have a motion by Rich, second by John for the council discussion. Is there any public comment on the matter? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries unanimously. Three point three discussion of possible action on request. By Rick Kettleson to purchase section of alley adjacent to three zero three South Dubuque Street. A motion by Rich.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Council discussion. Public comment. All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries unanimous. Eight point four resolution hiring wastewater operator training.
Who do approve? Second.
You, John?
Yeah.
Thank you. I have a motion by Jeff, second by John. Also discussion.
Glad to see we can keep them.
Public comment. There's no other discussion. Beth, please conduct the role.
Zomba?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Capron?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Smith? Yes. Muckert?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Eight point five reviewer, review and approval of job description and pay range for deputy treasurer slash central filing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Alan. For the council discussion. So this in sense would be creating a new titled position.
Correct.
The seeking of the city clerk just is not generating.
It is not.
Qualified.
Not at this time.
Would you be looking at this at this point to be a full-time position?
Correct.
Have you seen? From, I guess, applicants that came in. This job description. Any other discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carried unanimous. Eight point six review and approval liquor license renewal for hot shots bar and grill.
Second.
Motion by Alan, second by Rich. Any discussion? Public comment. All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion to approve carried unanimous. Eight point seven review and approval of current bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Rich, second by Alan. The council discussion on the itemization that was provided to us. Any comment from the public? All those in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion to approve carried unanimous. Nine point zero city administrators report.
City Hall is back open to the public. Yay. Uh, we had a good day planting on the fourteenth. Robert really loved it. It was actually, the weather was good and it rained right after, so it worked out great. We did have some volunteers that did come down. Work on the second floor is getting close to being completed. I heard that they're wiring everything now. So the electricians have been up there for a couple of weeks that I think that they're just waiting for some ceiling tile to be installed. So that's exciting. It is really, it looks great. We're going to have the windows repaired for now, glass and glazing then, just because lead time for replacement windows is like six months. So that'll be a future, future project. Um, we're going to be going live starting next Tuesday for the next two weeks with our general ledger and our payroll. Um, so that's mainly what I'm going to be looking at. So it's getting exciting. Um, but yeah, so we did the time clock training last week with all the staff. Um, it went pretty well. I'm pretty excited about that, too.
Good.
Is there any questions for Beth? Ten point zero mayor and council reports. Ten point one mayor's report. Nothing at this time. Ten point two council reports.
Live board met. It was just a complete routine meeting as far as I remember, so nothing to report.
Nothing else? Eleven point zero, public comment or items not on the agenda. I'll start with those in council chambers. See none. Uh, anybody virtually would like to. Discuss with council. If that is enough. Twelve point zero adjournment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by John. All those in favor signify aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion to approve carried unanimously.